President and I would like to mention that we have an ex-president who brought us a member to the family. He actually just moved right across from Michigan. So he had a second heart attack. His name is Mike Hughes. He was a former neighbor. And they call him the miracle man in the hospital right now because he's recovering. And the first one, the heart attack was from the world. So anyone who wants to pray for Mike Hughes, we appreciate it. He's a good guy.
Mike Hughes. Mike Hughes too.
I also want to mention this past week, asking one of our longtime residents, Joe Pratt, he got here this week and he was very active. He was very important to me.
He lived in that house where the road was from Shankton.
For what? Yeah. He's right on that corner where the road was supposed to be.
What's your resident name, John? Thank you.
He's doing well. He's not giving the donuts.
Right, yeah. Okay.
Robert Duhigg.
Yes, please.
President Pam Reap here. Vice President Robert Duhigg.
Here.
Counselor Jones and R. Alex Robson.
Here.
Rich Young.
Yeah.
Attorney General Anderson is absent. Doesn't want to be in his place. Police Chief Robert Sokolski absent. Park Board President Dela Millen, he's up here. BCA President Nick Collins absent. Building Commissioner Steve Pomp.
Here.
Whipmaster Diana Bellries.
She's not here, but I have her notes.
Okay. Ray, I'm with you here. Future's answer.
You too, my sister.
BCA and Local Community Joint Board. Pete is young. Okay, Attorney Dunn. I know he's got a lot of things planned for tonight. I hope you guys do the same. Got lunch. So you can open the public meeting.
Okay, I opened the meeting and is everyone?
It's a public meeting for the 2020 budget.
Oh, okay.
And finish it. We have Jessica Lynch who's here for Baker Tilly. Previously, I think she's in the corner. Go for it.
Yes, girl.
Okay. And she's supposed to present the budget part tonight. If you've got any questions, I would like to ask. She can answer if she can carry us. Do you want to say it? It's convenient for you.
Okay. Okay. Again, I'm Jessica Lynch. I'm the senior manager with Baker Tilly. I think Joan passed out a report that looks similar to this one, which is the cash flows for the different funds that are entered into Gateway for the budget, for the 2020 budget. And so page two is your general fund. And you'll see all the operating receipts that are estimated to be brought in for both calendar year 2019, so this year, and next year, 2020. And then the budgeted operating dispersments for that fund. So 2019 is the certified amount on the budget order for the year. And then 2020 is what the current public hearing is for those amounts. And those would change if there's going to be any changes for the adoption date. But so the discussions, the 2020 amounts. And you'll see there's a small reduction in the general, just to bring in an increase, decrease in cash and cash flow. That line 26, the index, to make it a balanced budget. So you're not continuously dipping into those cash reserves. Still have healthy cash balances right now. You see estimating the ending cash balance for 2020 to be $47,308, which is 31.9% of your operating balance. We typically recommend to have that be at least 20% for any funds that you have annually recurring operating dispersments out of. So that is your general fund. The next page is the NBH Fund, the unrestricted fund. If you'll remember, last year, the DLGF changed this where there's an unrestricted and a restricted portion of that NBH distribution. So half of that distribution has to be spent on paving local roads and streets. So that's why you obviously have the NBH distribution on line five coming into this unrestricted fund. And then on the next page, we have the restrictive fund, which is the other portion of that distribution. No change from 2019 to 2020 for the budget for operating dispersments there. There's a healthy cash reserve here. You'll see estimated at the end of 2020, still have $49,907 in that fund, which is almost 374% operating balance. But if there's not those annual operating expenses or those one-time capital items to spend to build up those cash reserves for those one-time expenses. The next page four is the NBH Fund, the restrictive fund. And that's where you see the other half of that distribution being deposited into this fund. And the restriction on those are to be spent on those pavings on the streets and roads. Page five is the local road and street fund, which has the annual distribution, the local road and street distribution into that fund. A slight increase from 2019 to 2020, but still maintain a balanced budget, not spending more than what you're annually receiving into that fund. They have still very healthy cash balances as far as what's being spent annually. That 109% operating balance there with the end balance of $11,684. Page six is the park fund. And so you'll have the levy there. There wasn't the increase, the growth quotient for property tax levy this year was, for 2020, was 3.5% of the growth quotient. So that accounts for the estimated increase in your certified property tax. That's that line two there. And hand with that may increase your certificate for credits as well, that corresponding 3.5% until people start hitting that maximum amount. No change in the operating dispersment, though. Still the plan to spend the same level in 2020 as was certified in 2019. And estimating any cash balance on line 18 there, $26,110, which is still a healthy operating balance of 189% there. Page seven, the cell tower fund. As you can see, there's not been any receipts being deposited into this fund, but it has been, dispersments have been budgeted out of here for 2019. I think it's the grant match. I mean, the grant match is where those dispersments are related to. You can see that this fund, the balances, the cash balances have been decreasing on that line 12. So at the end of 2020, we know that that's been out of the $4,0679. Some of that $105,000 that was spent out of there has been moved to the rainy, the spent out of the rainy day fund and the bills for that when we get to that fund. The $70,000 was for the grant match being allocated to that fund. Page eight is the refuse fund. So any of the charges that are collected for garbage or trash fees gets deposited into this fund. And then the operating dispersment, a small increase from 2019, but nothing drastic, just a couple hundred dollars. But still, and more than balanced budget for building up your cash reserves. As you see on line 13 there, about $511,000 in here. So healthy cash balance there as well. Estimating at the end of 2020, I have $38,957 in there. Then page nine, that's the riverboat fund. And that's where you'll see the annual riverboat distribution, usually received in August, November of year. So that's about $23,792. And historically, you've spent around the $60,000 to $65,000 in other services and charges there. And naturally, you'll see line six, that grant match, increasing the budget by that $75,000 for that grant to foresee having a budget to be able to match that where the spending or where you'll have cash available for that. We'll see at the end of 2020, that bringing down those cash reserves with that grant match to about $27,886. So starting to be close to that 20% operating balance percentage there. It's about 43.6%. And then page seven is your rainy day fund. Maintaining the cash balance of them there is at $8,652, but nothing's been budgeted to be spent out of there in 2019 or in 2020 as there's not any revenues going into that fund either. They're just maintaining that cash reserve. Page 11 is the CCI fund, which is the alcohol and cigarette tax, receiving that in. There's a small transfer from the general fund this year, but don't anticipate having that next year. And then no dispersments in 2019 or 2020. So just building up those cash reserves. And then the CCD fund, which is your cumulative capital development fund. So that also receives the property tax levy. This fund, as opposed to the other funds, is regulated by the tax rate rather than that 3.5% growth quotient. So the DLGF tries to keep that rate the same on this capital fund. So that's why the levy, you see that being, staying the same for 2019 to 2020. And once the certified assessed value comes up, then that may adjust, you'll have a certified levy that may adjust from that, just to keep that rate the same. And then your dispersments, the budget, still maintaining the $45,000 budget in 2019. That was in 2019. It's staying for 2020. So no major changes. Those cash reserves are decreasing a little bit. So there's only $6,222 that we estimate to be there in there at the end of 2020, that full budget is spent, 14%, 15% operating balance. That's not as concerning for this type of fund because it's only used for like those one-time capital expenses. So if you have that one-time capital expense, you may spend it down and then gradually build the reserves up over the next couple of years until you have another large capital item to spend from that fund. And page 13 is your CDF fund or your local income tax, the economic development for economic development. That's what's received in there. And then your dispersments, 2019 and 2020, keeping the budgeted amount up the same. That again is the same situation as the CCD fund, where you are deleting those cash reserves. So we estimate if the full budget in 2019 and 2020 are, is spent, having an ending cash balance of the $32,746. Still a healthy operating balance of 58%, but once you continually have those larger capital expenses, you may see that continue to decrease. And you want to think about balancing the budget just to build the cash reserves for the next capital item. And then the last fund, the non-rain building fund, the receipts into there, the licenses and permits annually, and no change from 2019 to 2020 in the budgeted dispersments for that, maintaining the same level. And actually, the over, having a budgeted balance or budget for 2020, an increase in those cash reserves. So a small amount of the capital is coming out of there. So having an ending cash balance of the $2,433, which is an operating balance percentage of what's spent at about 37%. Are there any questions?
Back to the riverboat.
Yes.
And page five. I remember that I don't know if we showed, but we were told that those, how many were getting, that that never low.
They could be lower.
So it was $2,019 and $23,000. That was lower than what it used to be.
I can't remember how much it was lower.
2020, about, when that came.
Well, we're thinking, yeah, based on what we have.
Well, somebody I remember said that it did less from the river.
Right, because.
And it started this year and that next.
Yeah, so let's, according to the 2018 annual report, and that's in the gateway, the riverboat distribution in 2018 was $36,566. So that is less. What they do is they let in a greater portion into other parts of the state. That's what we said.
So just trying to find when it started to go down to say, oh, this year.
Just here.
Anybody else have questions? Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Do you want to go up there?
It doesn't have a key. And so this next packet of information for the forms that are in the gateway for the budget. So this is what the DLGF sees when they go through and recalculate the budget. I everything on the 1782 notice. The first form is that budget form three, the notice to take care. So that's what was submitted in gateway for the public hearing tonight. And so that shows all your budget estimates that we have just gone through, the cash flows for the different funds. That's on column two for each of the funds. And then column three has the property tax levies for the funds that receive a levy. Those amounts are a little bit higher, not a lot, but a little bit higher than what you see in the cash flow, which is to account for. We want to be conservative to make sure once that certified assessed value comes in, when they calculate, you receive your maximum levy and your maximum tax rate. So that's the reason for that. The next form is the budget form four, which is the budget ordinance. So this is the form that will be signed at the adoption meeting in October. So right now, it matches the form three. If there are any changes from the public hearing tonight, those will get reflected on this form four. You can't change the form three. You can't increase anything. You can only increase it. So that's the budget form four. And then next is the budget form ones, which I think Joan is the one who wanted to go through in detail. So these have the line item dispersments for those major classification categories that were on the cash flows. Do you want to look through any of those, see if you have any questions? Both the published column and the adopted column are filled out right now. There's some apart writing inside. So the published column is what was on that form four. And then the adopted column is what flows to that, or sorry, excuse me, the published column is what flows to the form three and adopted column is what flows to the form four of the budget ordinance for the adoption. Again, the only major change you'll see is that on that, actually, the first page goes from the casino riverboat, just the fourth line down where it says line item transferred to BN R. match, which is about $75,000.
Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all we, we give us everything we need for the public hearing. I guess the only one, two.
Both, or either of you both.
Yes. So we, that part or that portion?
Yeah, the most of us.
At the rate of the money. All right. And that's what we're doing, the opening. Did you guys use the whole name? Bids for the light bid for restoration, do you have that?
Yeah, the bids were sent out. I mean, our keys were sent out.
Thank you.
Thank you. Christopher Burke, John Doyle, and Austin Soski. We received a bid back on Christopher Burke. I checked with him. He said it's not really in their expertise, but it'll take a couple more weeks to get some type of quote. Austin Soski, they not be able to get a whole bunch of winter, which is too late for the grant, biggest grant set in stages and timeframes. So we had a meeting tonight with Branda, and Alvin, and myself. And we established some points based on their expertise. The only part we could, nothing else we're missing, that's not his job. Hello? Yeah, no, we got the wrong number. That's the tip. We went through and did the evaluation based on the actual RFP. And we covered the expertise and string range stabilization and the math and the thirty points. They found a lot of that based on the bid, I think, various places that they had demonstrated. Again, you want to share work. And also based on their personnel that will be involved in and their expertise. And understanding this all, the one is basically pretty much the same based on what they've given us and giving them the math and the thirty points. Experience with the local governments, they had a lot of experience. And we give them another twenty points. And price for competitiveness, there's no way they need any way of matching, not matching, but comparing. If the past record of performance, ten is the highest, we gave a ten percent. So the max that they have is ninety out of a hundred, but the ten points for competitiveness, we couldn't evaluate. So we had that. And we'd recommend that we go ahead with Christopher Burke. So if we could have a vote on it, or if you have any questions, Paul Mulls and Christopher Burke can add your questions. Oh, I'm sorry. The price on it was $29,250. And that is the engineering part of the actual work we'll have to do in another RFP. How much was that? $21,250. Consulting with the DNR, the DNR suggested we do this in two smaller sections. That's why we have engineering one and construction.
Right.
Now I believe we got very good results from the stroke. Now, I would definitely add that.
We did, unless we're not your original.
Speaker, are you making a motion? Do you get any questions or accept? Okay. All those in favor?
Yes.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of course you said, I agree. All great, yes. Okay, did everybody have a chance to look over the council meetings from last month?
I believe the minutes are fine. But I do want to call on the first page where the established scripts in committee. I believe we picked that committee two months ago.
Month ago.
But anyway, I had, like most committees, it's a chairman. So I would say that needs a chairman so that it could be called.
I had in my report, the first treasure report, that we, several dates, that we've been doing it.
Well, I move that you need the chair of this committee. And then you could call the other members.
Okay, all those do vote on that?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody on the second bit? Suggestion? Anybody? No?
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was three ayes and?
Quite three.
And ayes.
Now I make a motion to accept the minutes as per.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Are we, um, this job description asks committee, and it says October sixteenth, or the twenty-third at one-thirty, are we gonna go ahead with that, or what is?
I threw it out there, but I, there's, not everybody's here that is on the committee, so I'll thank all three of you to appoint the chairman, I'll call, see if those things are available.
Okay. Okay, I was gonna go through the, uh, different reports that we usually, you know, here, but they're not here now.
I'll go with the lady that, the vouchers.
So, the vouchers, okay.
I'll go ahead and read the additional ones while you circle them.
Okay.
The additional vouchers for August, NIPSCO, heat for the town garage, fifty-six dollars and seventy-one cents, electricity for the street, thirty-one dollars and seventy-eight cents, and electricity for the, oh, sorry, I got this reversed, electricity for the town garage was thirty-one seventy-eight, electricity for the street license, thirty-two dollars. And then we had one for eighteen, and cheap for a hundred and seven dollars and four cents for a grand, for two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents.
And would you accept these August, uh, house paper, and I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, I'm not gonna go on to the different, the different reports, but I see a lot of people here.
September twenty-one, twenty-two. Second one, this is a field, uh, all the way in the ground, house paper, we have this through for September, mission, Sean, all the security department, three thousand, three hundred and sixty-six dollars and fifty-three cents for wire protection, toll to credit card, a hundred and five dollars for rent and liability, town of Long Beach, for police protection, one thousand five hundred and ninety-seven dollars, free public services for the revenue services for September, change my date to a gap for the morning in September, three dollars and twenty-six cents on the SIM, I S V K insurance for public entity liability, and also for employment practice, third party liability, this whole, the last one deals with employment, four thousand two hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty cents. Department of Water Works, for water for the garage, nine dollars and forty-nine cents, water for Penn State Park, nine dollars and forty-nine cents, brand heckman for driving back and forth to the post office and the bank, sixty-nine dollars and two cents, office depot, I had to buy a new battery backup, I think, R fits the dust, and also a toner for the, you know, packer, packer, printer, two hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-seven cents, frontier along recreation for repairs of John Lear tracks, three hundred and fourteen dollars and seven cents, Comcast for our internet, eighty-six dollars and ninety cents, Bayor Chili for filling our budget, three thousand nine hundred and seven dollars and fifty cents, applied ecological services, that was for the, um, restoration, and that was one thousand five, I'm sorry, two thousand one hundred and fifty dollars. That was just a partial payment, we only have one more payment to go, and then the other ones for Shell, whatever, thirty-seven dollars and six cents per gallon, for a grand of twenty-two thousand eight hundred and fifty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents.
And would you accept and pay the bill for the remainder of, of the deal this summer? Yes, I saw it there.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Did everybody agree? Okay, um, did Bob Sikowski or Gary give you any comments? Okay, so we only have any reports from the police or the fire department?
No, the road commission.
Okay. How about Steve Collins, he's here?
I'll leave you there, yeah, um, since the last meeting, there was a three permits issued, there was a garage addition, a swimming pool, and a rerun.
Steve, was that rough, the one I asked you about, over there at the corner?
It's on Brookside.
Okay, yeah. There is a permit, I think it obviously mentioned out in London, but I haven't been here that long, that guy, uh, he's never liked me.
Maybe he's a customer.
Maybe. He can't read the permit, so.
Donald, you have any thoughts?
Uh, not much, we're still trying to work out about pickleboard, and, uh, we've had two neighbors giving us a look, probably don't want it, because like, um, it's done from that, and some of them are even a little bit, that's on this particular, so we're still thinking about that, we don't have enough money to do it yet, but we're still working on that.
Okay.
Think there's anything else going, oh, uh, Kyle Marshall is going to redo, uh, repaint that sign with the streets that he, it was his, his deal from the start, he did that when he was in Boy Scouts, and he said he'd do it for, I don't, not very much, whatever, across the, yeah, and he did it, he should have personal choice, whether it should be done or not.
Yeah, I think it should be done.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, that's about all, I think. Okay, thank you, Donald. Well, Rich, I guess you're gonna give us a trigger removal report?
I guess. Yeah, if you remember, uh, when you ordered the contract to Jane Hassel, Sikowski said he won't sue for that, which I understand is part of his job, um, Mick got back to me, um, he checked out these trees, and there could be a problem, uh, the tree, you know, it looks like it's right next to the street, but on Dan Coffee's property, right there on, but it's a shadow, I guess, because it's very wide, okay, it turns in shadow, um, makes sense that if you look at Coffee's, uh, stake for the park tonight, that tree is on his property, and then two of the other trees, I guess, are on relish, is that who owns it, helps or did it?
Who owns it?
He still owns it.
They're, um...
Yes, he still owns it, so, yeah, and who did it?
Anyway, there's two of those trees right around the corner from that empty house, uh, but they're right there, there are beauties and Birchwood, and I don't know what the other trees is, the other side are beauties. One of them is fifteen feet off the road, according to Mick, and the next tree that is marked to be taken down is at least nineteen feet off the road, and it's not in your lives, and, uh, basically, if those people gave us permission, then it's in town's duty to take trees out, and people's property, because it was spent time, money, to take down trees that are not ours, or not in our right of, so, um, she wasn't there to, the next to get going on the other ones, he found one nineteen feet off the roadway, and he couldn't find that, um, okay, I didn't know, a foot and a half.
Okay.
Okay. The one I was having asking here for the last two and a half, three years?
I didn't, that shit adds up.
No, you did, it's not on the list, but I'm saying, he found a tree that's nineteen feet off the roadway, but couldn't find it, it wasn't dying, it's on, and, I don't know.
You don't mean, mean wrecked, I mean bombed, bombed.
Nick, it's just bombing.
So, what, what should we do about these three trees that are not in our right?
Leave them alone, we're not fucking people's bomb, but, but, I don't, it must be a misunderstanding, if, if those trees are maybe in private property, or at risk of falling over into the street, uh, we can send a notice and request an order that they take care of those trees.
I believe the two, like, are, are ash trees, and I believe they're dead, so they probably will come down one day, but I, wasn't relish's property in the courts or something?
Yeah, I was here, but here's something, I don't, I don't know what's going on there, nobody lives there, um, no, I think, but all the, no.
Well, it's down, not towards the other side.
If they are noticed, that the tree is dying, or it's creating a hazard or a risk, on notification, unless it's already known and obvious to them, uh, then the risk of liability shifts to them, and, um, that may be a separate sound, but even in circumstances like this, if there's a, a genuine risk that it will imperil, uh, the street, or traveling, you know, traffic, or even pedestrians for that now, uh, we may be able to initiate action, do the work ourself, and then charge it back to them. We'll have to undertake some steps to do that. I'd say a little, though, for now, check with Bob, let's, uh, team him up, kind of talk to him, I, I'm, I'm guessing there's a misunderstanding.
I'm trying, well, I'm checking myself, I believe with, if, uh, if I called Dan Clark, he would go ahead and really let him take the one down, the first one I mentioned. I mean, it is, but it's on the street, I don't know, if this street is curved, then where it's on his property, right, same like happens, like happened on, uh, Draywall and Brookside.
Is it dead?
Yeah. And that one, I would say, is close enough to the street, you're putting it down in the closet.
I asked for the hand, you weren't to take it, before we get stopped.
If I think it's okay, then, so we pursue with that. Dan Clark, it's okay.
But, um, private property?
According to Mick, even though it's right next to the street, and I think that comes into the issue, you know, the street is not plotted, right, it's not straight, and, uh, I don't know, you know, is it, like, usage after a while, it just becomes that way, and it's, you know, we're not gonna change.
Sure, right. Taping and repaping and attaching the street, uh, sometimes takes it out of alignment where it should be, and so that there's a false geographic sense of boundaries, uh, but the boundaries don't in fact change, so, um, if we're enhancing private property, um, we can, we can put them on notice, we can make requests, um, unless there's provable immediate emergency apparel, uh, we can't really order them to take it down, um, but if there is,
I'm saying Mick would take it down, if you guys are okay.
But then, we'd be in a dilemma that we're taking somebody private property assessment down.
And it is right there on the street.
And that's regarded as a misuse of taxpayer money, so we wouldn't be able to do that.
Wouldn't we have to survey that to find out where the street belongs, so that we know where we're going?
Well, Mr. Coffee should have a reasonable plot of survey that, uh, would make, make an easier job.
Would you request to get that piece of property back, just like we did over here on, uh, Oakdale, for the part of their properties, pay over, and they request, and Martinez, uh, requested to have that back, that part of their property? Can anybody do that, or go, go, not look for them?
Well, it, it depends, uh, if, if the road is in fact on his property, then, then they create, present a dilemma.
The bridge could even be part of his large property.
That, uh, that certain stage you're referencing is comparatively, you know, a clear-cut case that, uh, we need to...
I'll tell you what, Coffee was planning to take it down, we were just trying to get a little bit clearer, not really, but pretty maturely, so we'll just, it's all right, we'll leave it alone until we get more clarity.
I think that's a better idea.
And, and see, is that one of the properties that he, uh, had before the plan, that she submitted a plaque for a drawing from which we'd be able to make a, an easy determination?
Diana would have that if she did, I assume, you know, presented the flag to the house.
Um, maybe you have a, got a quick answer to what we need to know?
But she's got hair, and she would have it, anyway. Okay, you want me to go right in and plant the mission, please? We met last week, I believe we were all there, and, um, under new business, Mr. Coffee had immediately come back with a new plan, because the month before he'd been told that his plan was not, uh, he needed to go to the PTA for some of our ones, so he instead changed the plan, and, uh, so we gave him a second hearing, but then through some really good groundwork by Diana and Ray, who had, and Ray had said he would check out some of the issues, and we found out, and I'm not confusing, but that there was a different plan submitted to the public health department in regard to the subject permit than the plan that we were shown when he was applying for a permit, so we told him, well, Diana actually talked to the lady that gave him the permit, and she said she was going to, right, what was the right word, because to me, when it's like, Coffee was upset with the word reject, that was, temporarily put on a hold, or, or revoked?
Well, that's the same thing.
I thought she was going to pull the permit, pull the permit, yeah.
Until he got the maps in line, because what happened, and his map had shown us, the subject was within six feet of the foundation, and the health department requires it to be ten feet, so, once the planning mission was told about this, um, there was a motion made to just totally reject, him being there, that, that comes out, uh, reject the... Him being there, that comes out on, uh, reject the issue of him applying because he didn't have the proper picture. So then, uh, discussion kept going on, but, um, our attorney, the study that showed up. And so I believe now we're in hotbed with his life?
Uh, we're shooting phone calls.
Because there's a, there's never a legal issue about his permit. He's trying to claim that. Are you going to discuss this? I guess.
You probably shouldn't. Deal with any, any particulars. You can just report if there's legal issues there.
Uh, there's legal issues.
Pending.
And, uh, so I believe Mr. Coffee tried to work through this wire and art. But that was the main part of my notes and it was a big part of the meeting. Um, under old business, we discovered we do have before us to study, I don't know, at least a twenty-five or more page, unsafe housing, uh... What is unsafe housing? A possible resolution? Was it the ordinance, was it?
Uh, sorry. I, I think that resolution would be the, or actually the plan commission's purposes was to put together a guidance or a white paper so that we could operate with these very small technical statutes to cross-reference each other.
There are several houses in town that used to be looked at in terms of condemnation. Uh, under permission of comments, uh, it was... Again, question, the legal question of the city. Then Alex brought up a issue about our fees, what we charge for the report document. We're going to probably adjust the next show. Uh, we adjourned at nine thirty, which is very long meeting for us. I don't want to play anybody.
And now President, if I may, may add onto that. One of the situations that occurred in the course of the meeting specifically with, with regard to the, uh, the topic, um, resubmission or new submission, we're not sure exactly what it was that he was going to submit to that plan commission meeting. Because Indiana generally allows cities, towns and counties to have enforcement responsibilities for planning and zoning laws and building laws for that matter, to submit a complete application. It's generally recognized if any component, part is missing, then it's not a complete application. And the plan commission in this case doesn't have an actual project to review. So they have to complete the requirements of the application or the petition and get that before the board, before the board can, if you will, take jurisdiction of it. So, um, that was, I think, a more of a complete description as to why, uh, the plan commission could not go further.
No. Okay, thank you. Um, does any, do you have a BCA report?
The next BCA meeting is scheduled for November twenty-first, seven P M.
All right. Thank you. Last one was canceled?
Right.
The last one canceled because I think you're filming this here. Okay. Okay, thank you. And what about the party?
White Ditch. There's a drainage board meeting this afternoon at two P M. But nothing that affects, uh, Michiana Shore.
Okay, thank you.
Ray, have you walked it back a little bit?
I, I didn't walk it. I walked it last week. I didn't walk it yesterday or today.
From Oakdale, I can see like a ranch down on the pathers.
From Oakdale, you're talking about going west.
Looking backwards on the road.
Yeah, we, we mentioned it to the Drain Iment to the last month and they were going to go check it out.
That's another, another smaller thing that fell somewhere off a portal by a gas station.
There, there were several.
Have they blocked the path? Is that even one of them?
When I walked it a week ago, uh, there was nothing that was really blocking the flow. However, there were obstacles that were blocking the path. And I'm talking from Oakdale west of the end of the Michiana Shores, which the Drainage Board is responsible for and they were notified. And they're going to be taking action. I didn't take a look to see yesterday or today if they did anything.
Okay, thank you. You don't have yet the website?
Uh, I, I do have, uh, Diana's notes, uh, website update. The website has been updated to reflect the new month. Dates for all of this month's meetings have been added. Uh, agreeing for fall, referring to leaves burning, placing near the roadway to no dumping has been added. Uh, next week there will be a newsletter added as a regular monthly. Um, and as needed, more frequently featured, uh, to the website so that residents can get firm information more quickly.
Oh, thank you. That's a good idea.
That's it?
That's it?
For that. Can, can I just go back on, on the White Ditch? I just want to make sure everybody understands. Michiana Shores is, the town of Michiana Shores is responsible right now for only one section of the White Ditch. And that's from El Portal to Oakdale. The Drainage Board is responsible for the other parts of the White Ditch, uh, from El, from Oakdale. No, where am I talking? From El Portal to Michiana border as well as from, uh, Oakdale to the end of Michiana Shores.
I don't know if you're just moving on for the rest of the agenda, but this is relatively pertinent to the website committee report. And, uh, Ray, I'm not sure, uh, if Diana had, uh, changed her mind, but we had a conversation over several telephone calls. And I think at the last meeting where, uh, she made an inquiry that was very reasonable to me, uh, asking, uh, if we should or shouldn't, uh, in fact post-election information on the website. And that she demanded to, uh, you know, include the names of the candidates. And it struck me since the town has changed the election system that that also would make it doubly important to have that type of information. So anticipating that she feared tonight and that she would make the request that she be authorized to, uh, put that information on the, on the website. If, if the council members will recall, when we first started implementing, uh, the activities for, for the website, um, we passed two policy statutes. And one policy statute said that the town council, uh, needs to give consent, uh, to the contents for the webpage. And, uh, Diane's done a great job of things. Uh, but I thought I would, would sort of nudge the group and remind everybody that that is part of the policy. And, uh, since this is an election year and this is a political body everybody's involved in. And so I thought we, we probably should put this in the form of a resolution and officially have the council approve it. So that's what you have before you. For treasure in anticipation of this has given us a number. And this is Resolution twenty-nine, or twenty nineteen dash vote three. It's entitled as a resolution of the town council of the town of Michiana Shores authorizing how election information and candidate names be posted on the town website. Now, state law has evolved because we used to use heavily paper ballots in Indiana. Uh, after the events in, in Florida, uh, Bush order presidential election and the United States Supreme Court decision, the federal government pushed all states into using electronic ballots and systems. Although we still use paper ballots for provisional ballots and for backup emergency, uh, purposes. But, um, they changed their law with regard to, uh, sample ballots. And, um, it used to be that you couldn't reproduce anything that looked like a sample ballot. So a simple listing of candidate names, uh, might get you into trouble. So I wrote this up with all those things in mind. It says, whereas the policy of the town is for the website contents to be approved or authorized by the town council. And whereas the website administrator or webmaster has requested that as a public service to the citizens of the town, the municipal election information specifically a listing of town candidates for twenty nineteen municipal election be posted and available on the town website. And whereas the town has changed the manner in which it elects the town council, having switched from electing representatives from designated geographic town warrants or district to an at-large system where voters who have a few candidates will be able to vote for five. And whereas the election is not conducted by the town, but by the Port County Election Board, now therefore be resolved and ordained by the town council of the town of Michiana Shores. The town website shall include a listing of candidates who will appear on the November ballot for election to town office in the November fifth, twenty nineteen election and their political party affiliation, which may be in form of a family issued sample ballot permissible and available from or authorized by county election board staff. And with any other appropriate nonpartisan election information, including but not limited to early voting information, voting polling place, locations and times, precinct designation maps or graphics, and website administrator or webmaster as designated to be directed to review this resolution. It's a resolution and all it requires is not reading, uh, which I would suggest I just gave.
I make a motion that we adopt Resolution twenty nineteen oh three. Second.
All was in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, he.
Second.
Yeah, it was second. Yeah. Okay. All in favor.
So the declaration of the motion passed. If you would, could I get a coffee? Yes. And if you would sign and have the president sign the number. I think I was so bold as to date that in advance. Since I'm up as the next item on the agenda. Well, you need one for yourself. You should have two for the clerk's office and one for the webmaster. And then, there's only eight minutes. So for any other members, one copy we can accommodate you. You can retrieve a photocopy later on. Um, you had the public hearing tonight, um, on the, uh, the budget, which I strategically missed so that I could get the parking space of the umball representing when he left. Um, so, uh, Marge, Marge was joking about that, but, uh, there was a space out there for me. It was great. The, the process for adopting and acting the budget is to follow those dates that are on the notice that required instead of the public hearing for the final purposes. And also to have the designated date for the final adoption. The, uh, for the budget form, uh, number four constitutes the actual budget and the ordinance. So, so that we do not place ourselves in a position of peril and get to the next meeting and only have three members in attendance, um, we might not be able to pass the budget on the advertised date at the adoption meeting if we only have three members. So I would ask that tonight, you consider and adopt the order. Vote on the ordinance on one reading only, leaving it in the position to be amended and to be adopted with relative ease at the adoption meeting. I confused the reading orders I, I just said. But you can recall, the state law says that if an ordinance is going to be adopted on the same meeting that it is first introduced, uh, then we have to have, out of our rules, two readings and two affirmative votes. But the state law also says that, um, a requirement that an ordinance or in some places a resolution or other action of the legislative body be passed by two-thirds vote, meaning at least two-thirds of all the elected members, or the five members of the, uh, town council. So two-thirds or more members is required to approve it, to be approved on second reading. So if we didn't take a vote tonight and approve it on first reading, as is, we can change it or amend it, um, on second reading. And we got to the meeting that's advertised as the adoption meeting and there's only three numbers here. Even if all three wanted to move it to second reading, we don't have that two-thirds approval. So then we would be stuck in a position where we couldn't even adopt the budget that we prepared, uh, for this year. So we've done this every year, um, that I've been around. And I would respectfully ask that, uh, the ordinance be, be read. You can just read the, the ordinance paragraph, uh, that states what the action is. And the members have seen the proposed budget tonight.
It's in there. Just lay it all down.
Okay, at the first part of it.
That first part of that.
The meeting with the public hearing, uh, that's sufficient to figure that. On first reading only, you're not approving it to conclusion, uh, you're just passing it on first reading.
President, can you show her the report?
I'm ready. Or that's number two oh one nine dash oh four. Bid or name result of Michiana Shores Town Council. Therefore, the expenses Michiana Shores Civil Town for the year ending December thirty first point four, as known here as specified, hereby appropriated order set apart out of the service fund herein made and for the purpose herein in the pesticide, subject to the law, covering the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be able to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year. On best otherwise expressly stipulated and provided by law. In addition, for the purposes of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Michiana Shores Civil Town, the property tax lumpies, property tax rates as herein specified are included herein. Budget for, for reading for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Global Government Finance. This order and resolution shall be in full force in the back of the permit after passage of this by the Michiana Shores Town Council. Will you locate your votes that are passed out? It's a...
Okay, I make a motion that we accept the budget orders as presented today.
Maybe you have a second?
I have a second.
All in favor?
And again, you have not signed because it's not final adoption and you have the ability to, uh, to seek to amend, or to go with at the advertised, uh, public hearing.
Would you like a second?
For adoption meetings, or... The next agenda item is, um, to establish a fixed asset policy. And this was... And this was one of the last things in the last State Department of Accounts audit report that they criticized. Apparently, they are unable to find, as we are unable to find, any free existing fixed asset or capital asset policy for the town that's been the law forever in the state of Indiana for municipalities to have that. Primarily, the function to carry this out is intended to result in inventory of all property of the town. For accounting purposes, they use it for other reasons, and that's to calculate into valuation of municipal property, which is not an active concern that we have at our level, but that is a concern in State Department of Accounts. So they have all kinds of sophisticated formulas and guidelines and practices and accounting rules that they impose on the chief financial officers of the state. Most fixed asset policies are also designed to force the department heads of departments to keep inventories of their departments and to provide the town with a ready-made list that's supposed to be reviewed with some routine, whether it's semi-annually or every couple of years. State Department of Accounts would say, it's ongoing process and we should do it every month. You may have noticed that, I think the year was 2008, the town received a donation of real estate. And since has received two or three other parcels in donation. And you might recall that in 2016, the town took custody of the taxable properties, there were 18 properties, I think, either we ended up with or started out with. So we ended up with 18 properties. And each of those instances, we passed a resolution stating that those parcels of land, whether donated or acquired through tax sale, would become part of the inventory and should be added to the capital asset records or capital asset ledger of the town. So I just presumed that we had a policy. And it was pointed out by clerk treasurer that the audit report said they couldn't find it. She's been searching there ever since, she hasn't been able to find it. So I am putting one to... This is a fairly abbreviated policy. One of the key components that the state will look for for the smaller towns and the smaller communities is to make sure that you have a threshold that you can work with. One of the other features when they expect the department heads to keep track of things in the larger communities, they're keeping track of things like laptops and cell phones and other property that has high value, but it's still below the threshold. Now, some communities use a $100 threshold. Some communities break out and say, everything of $100 and more, the departments have to keep it in inventory enough. Other communities just go with threshold for capital assets. And so that's what we've done here. Because it's the type of thing that goes hidden from our day-to-day operation, I want to make sure that we put this into our code. So it's part of the code books that either new members get and look at, or you as veterans get and look at and can be reminded of what the main rules are. So I didn't put in all of the rules. And again, that falls on the chief executive officer to implement and employ those. And because of our arrangement in town, for example, we have a police department and police services, but we don't own any of the inventory of the individual officers like the town on page does and the other communities throughout the state that have a police department. All of those things are inventory items, and we don't have that to worry about. To a lesser extent, we should be worried about that with the street department area of things. Since I was codifying this, and there's some non-code provisions in here, but the bulk of it, it's in the ordinance I put into a codified form, I also took the opportunity to enlarge Article 3's description and title headings or chapter headings of the administrative functions of government. So if you look at the first page, right under, near the bottom, this is Article 3 Administration. You see chapter 1 through 3, those are already items that are in your code. And so chapter 1 is departments, chapter 2 is boards, commissions, and bureaus, and chapter 3 is reserved. In anticipation of either portation efforts that will come out of clerk treasurer's office, or if there arises through the State Department of Accounts or some other reason that we need to or find it desirable to codify our internal controls ordinance, I have that marked in chapter 4. Chapter 5 is marked as the credit card, debit card, and purchasing card ordinance for policy in case that's in resolution form presently, which it may be. Chapter 6 is finance and revenue collections and unpaid bills, which we either have an ordinance or a resolution guarding that. And then, chapter 7 is fixed assets or capital asset provisions and policy. So that's what we're about to have. If you've already started the portation process and have assigned chapters 4 through 6, or even 4 through 7, a different category of ordinance or company, we can change those. But for tonight's purposes, I would just ask that we approve this on both first and second reading, so that will take the consent of all four of you. I will give it a reading, if I may, in an abbreviated fashion. It is titled, "As an Ordinance Codifying a Fixed Asset Policy Known as the Capital Assets Policy of the Town of Michiana Shores. In order for the Town of Michiana Shores to maintain a complete inventory of all capital assets owned by the town to implement the LAL accounting standards, Board Statement 34, if applicable or as applicable to the town, to provide basic formulaic capital assets acquisition records and recording, and whereas there is a need to establish a threshold amount for items being included in the applicable capital assets inventory ledger or records, and whereas it would be helpful to codify and maintain portions of the new capital asset policy, now therefore be able to read that, it is enacted by the town council to establish for the establishment of chapter titles and subject line headings in Article 3, Title 1, and a fixed asset or capital asset policy portions of which shall be codified and included in this code as follows. Section 1 is the chapter listing provisions that I just explained. Section 2 is chapter edition Article 3, which is chapter 7 of Article 3, Capital Assets Policy. So that's comprised of sections 1 through 6. They appear with their full citation of section 1-3-7-1, the establishment of the capital asset policy. Section 2 is the policy purpose, which was recited in the whereas paragraph that I just read. Section 3 is the capital assets ledger. Says, "This ledger is to provide a record of the capital assets of the Town of Michiana Shores. The ledger or capital assets record shall include eligible acquisitions of or additions to assets such as land, infrastructure, buildings, improvements, other than buildings, and machinery and equipment acquired or owned by the town. Capital outlays such as right-of-way and capital assets listed in the chart of accounts by the State Department of Accounts should be considered, if not included." Section 4 is the capital threshold. It says, "A capital threshold at the amount of $5,000 or more. Fixed asset capitalization states thereby..." It is hereby, excuse me, establish a fixed asset capitalization policy to account for all or any item in the town's inventory or which received by the town that has a value and is not consumed, whether purchased or donated to the town, that is expected to have a useful life longer than one year. Section 6 is non-capitalized assets. There are certain non-capitalized assets that shall be listed and inventoried, usually food expensive but less than $1, $5,000, computers, printers, and similar electronics, trucks, and motorized power equipment owned by the town. Section 3 is non-code provisions, basically comprised of two sections. One is utilities. If or when the town takes ownership, possession, or control of Swolewet's sewer line, sewer system, or pertinences, it and any other such infrastructure, system, or utility shall be included and added to the capital assets record or inventory regardless of valuation. And such, town shall follow the applicable guidelines for utilities of the Indiana State Department of Accounts. That's in there, both as a reminder that we have that sewer line out there that we've never taken any control of. And because the State Department of Accounts has a whole catalog of utility units, that that and anything else like it will come under. And again, we're unfortunately pushing that off onto the chief executive or chief financial officer of the town. The other non-code paragraph is a safety provision that I like to put those into our ordinances that states our intent. The intent, like the purpose, the intent of this policy is to comport and comply with the guidance and instructions of the Indiana State Department of Accounts, uniform lines, guidelines, the bulletins, and the best practices governing capitalization of fixed or capital assets. I'll also mention that the state, in the last year, has been replacing its best practices, which is usually a set of white papers, instructions, and guidelines, with actual accounting guidelines that are used throughout the accounting industry. So the Umba representatives are probably all thinking that as more towns, like Michiana Shores, goes further into the capitalization and capital assets use, there will probably be more business. Probably not from us because we're not in utility businesses any longer. And I'll also note that under the old water contract, because we own those water lines, that should have been heavily inventoried, and we should have had a big filing cabinet that constitutes our records. You might notice that I use interchangeably the reference to the state form, which is a legal formal document, and records or documents or existing inventories. That's because we have a hodgepodge of record keeping. So we probably have enough to stay out of trouble, but we need to formalize it. And that's the import of Department of Accounts audit comment in the last part. The other sections of this document, section 4 is superseding effect. Basically says, "We recognize those other documents that we have as having some importance, and they survive." Section 5, similar language, but it goes to our current practices. Section 6 is the standard severability provision that we put into all our ordinances, stating that if somebody else gets sued in the Court of Appeals or the State Supreme Court or federal court comes along and strikes that down and says, "Even though you did it the way the State Department of Accounts wants you to do it, your section 3 is illegal, all the other sections stand, continue to operate, and survive whatever challenge or opinion may give, given the debate that I just gave an example to." Section 7 is the retroactive application and emergency amendment clause, which you're all familiar with. So I would ask that we approve it, we take two votes, approve it tonight. Somewhere along the line, you may just take three votes, and the middle vote, which you suspend rules and adopt it on second reading time.
I have a question.
Yes.
Is section 3, do we have to accept this sewer line? Are we committed to accepting it?
I think pretty much so, so when it's, if it's in fact a hole and to our liking. So when the time comes, we can hire an engineer or consultant to go in and check it out. And if it's not up to par, not up to what the state specs are from IDAM or DNR, we can say, "You got to upgrade it before we accept it." So generally, we're inclined to receive it. But if it's not up to specification that the state requires, that language is in the agreement documents or resolutions or prior approval. So you get a legal answer. So part of the answer is yes, part of the answer is no.
So this ordinance is requiring that we make a list of our assets, basically?
Yes, it basically says, you have to use the letter form that they have, not the system that we have.
And a good chunk of our assets is already listed, we've got insurance, right? We have to do that.
Not all of them.
Not all of them.
But trucks are, I sent an email last week before last, asking to take them in the garage. I actually just threw away two years back and then I've got one, but this time something, it has to be done. He does it to somebody else. I don't feel it's the best.
Mr. Bennett?
Yes.
I have a question. What is to take the hurry out of this, that this has to be done tonight? It's retroactive back to January 7th, 2019.
The State Department of Accounts is in, or at least, what's the formal term that they use now?
Engagement.
They announced that engagement, which means the audit has commenced. You recall that the clerk treasurer, probably for the last calendar year, the clerk treasurer has been filing monthly the activity of the town. Disbursements, claims approvals, meanments. They have a calendar system, it's supposed to be every 30 days. It actually works out as a practical matter to be a big deal, 60 days, so you've got a whole 60 days. And the way things work for the clerk treasurers throughout the state of Indiana is their 30 days are collapsing on each one, so they're always behind under the scheme that the state is presently using. So when an engagement is announced, that means the State Department of Accounts auditor, they come through the door any day and say, "I want to see the old records." Typically, they come in, they say, "Give me a couple of these long tables. I want you to put out all your ordinances, all your resolutions, all your claims vouchers, other records that they may request depending upon what they're looking at." They say, "We're going to look at..." They say, we're going to look at the building department. We want you to get the building commissioners' records and reports and other matter. Uh, if you're looking at everything, they're going to ask for everything. If they're looking just for, um, indicators of practices, uh, my prediction is since they did a special investigation, we thought they were going to close the, the actual field audit. And on their last visit, they said, oh, we have some calls and complaints, which may have only been one, uh, about, uh, the building commissioners' practices and the, uh, building ordinances in use in the town. So they did a review and they actually did a special report if you looked at the, at the audit reports that posted on the, the internet. Uh, so it's my prediction that when they come back this time, they're going to file up examination or audit of, uh, building department records. Uh, that will include the ordinances and the government resolutions, the orders of building commissioners' records. And what they, what they typically do is they'll reconcile, if you do, with your checkbook, for those that are still doing that. I don't know what the internet banking is like these days because I don't participate. It's just like a reconciliation where they'll check the building department records and reports against the minutes and the records in clerk treasurer's office. There's a separate statute, you're probably all aware, uh, that says all financial records have to be stored in clerk treasurer's office. Um, we also have the clerk treasurer's offices, the repository for all the other agency minutes. So the plan commission, uh, and park board and the BCA minutes and ultimately in the clerk treasurer's office. Part of that is also to be compliant with the access to public records laws, um, so that there's a centralized return that's timely and doesn't get us into, into trouble on that basis. So, uh, my urgency that I'm making the request and recommendation is, uh, is because the Board of Accounts, for my purposes, from my perspective, has already started their, their reviews. And, uh, they're doing that remotely from Indianapolis because they're starting with the records that they have for this year.
They're ready.
And they, and they've already been here.
Uh, section seven, is that what you referred to, the one now? Section seven, okay. Yeah, I'm just curious why it has to go back to January 7th of 2019? All of our ordinances always have this emergency thing. I don't know if you remember that. So it seems like an urgency, but they all seem...
I, I, I have most of the time ordinances in Indiana, many of the resolutions declare an emergency, uh, potentially if we have an enforcement matter, uh, that's demanding we take action as a municipality. And in, in many cases, not all, this is not all, um, if you're going to take immediate action, you can sometimes implement enforcement on an ordinance by posting the ordinance if you satisfy the posting law so that it's posted by, we have five, uh, members of the town council. We used to have five wards, I guess I have to look that up. When we got five wards, we will technically until the end of the calendar year, um, if we advertise by posting, we can simply post five copies, five places throughout the town. And that will satisfy the legal advertising. I have in my head that the, uh, plan commission should put into the comprehensive plan the idea that, that each ward, the old ward, the old district, should have a, uh, a posting location. So that we have five locations throughout the town, obviously the town hall is one down, where we can post an ordinance or an enactment, resolution or an order at five locations through the town. By doing that and declaring an emergency in the enactment itself, so I, I try to put it in everything, even though sometimes it's surplus action, um, that may allow us to avoid the advertising cost. And someone who may know, we've had a couple of years where, um, because we had to do so many enactments and advertise those or do advertising, I think the, the year that we did two annexations within the same year, uh, we had heavy, uh, advertising expenses that year. The plan commission, if you do a zoning enactment that originates in the plan commission or if it originates here and gets sent back to the plan commission, they have to do legal advertising, all that costs money. If there's an enforcement provision or an exaction, if you're getting something out of taxpayers or out of petitioner, uh, if there's a fee or there's a penalty, then you have to advertise it at the end of the process after it's, it's passed. That technically may not go into effect until after the ad runs. There are very few, but there are some financing mechanisms, um, that require more than one legal advertising. And in the case of annexations and, uh, financing mechanisms, there may be more than one legal ad that you have to run and that makes effective the next step in the process. Uh, some fiscal actions that we don't undertake typically or routinely here that, that none of us are well acquainted with, um, require a legal notice after an enactment to allow citizens or taxpayers to file a protest elsewhere in the state, the Department of Environmental Management or with the, uh, State Department of Local Government Finance and so on and so forth. So I envision someday that we'll put into the comprehensive plan this idea that we need a posting station at, at least five of them, four of them in addition to the, the town office facility. And, uh, and then we can post things, satisfy that requirement, and then we're not spending all this money, even though advertising is regulated by state law. We don't have to worry about, uh, getting caught in the problem of we can't enforce the law until we get advertised. So we go to the newspaper and say, this is an emergency, and they say, fine, but you go to the, the staff of the legal ads, which are always long, um, and some of them have to be published in their entirety and some can be advertised in abbreviated form. One of the things that the clerk treasurer and I have done for many years is if we can take and have abbreviated form of the legal advertisement, there's a notice of enactment, we'll do that and that cuts down and saves money.
Okay, I'm going to assume that all this ledgering of our assets is going to fall on Joan and run this show.
Oh, yes.
So when you talk about, uh, the same dudes that keep coming up, you know, this is a good example. So I would make the motion that we, um, pass this, uh, ordinance, number three.
It's 201905.
05?
05.
So then I have...
That's under capitalization.
That last one was all four? So I made the motion, Madam President?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Now I...
I abstain.
He abstains. Well, I make the motion to suspend regular, maybe new, but we can put through it, right? To regular all the business so that we can vote on the second.
Yeah, he may make, he may vote differently.
Motion to suspend regular order to take up the second.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
I...
Aye.
I still abstain.
Okay. Okay, now I move on the second reading, which would be the final reading.
Well, that, that is not the case because he is abstaining now. And the statute requires the two-thirds approval of the entire membership.
So... Approval of the ordinance?
Correct.
So only if you still vote?
I would say no, uh, because...
Even instead of staying from suspended regular business, we still got three votes to do that. Three of the five.
There's no reason why you have to vote on this tonight. You could study it for a month. What's the difference?
Which you can study.
How much is it?
Okay. Go ahead.
I made the motion that we pass on the second.
Okay. All who's in favor?
Uh, I still abstain.
So it fails on the second reading because we don't have two.
Correct. So that will return to the next meeting's agenda. I have one more, uh, request of ordinance that also is not on the agenda. And, uh, this is the real reason that I was late, not because I was hoping to get a good parking space from the accounting consultant that was here for the public hearing on, on the budget. As you know, we, um, reenacted, uh, entirely new sign ordinance and replaced it with a, a modern updated, uh, legal document. And as I've been describing in, in past, uh, past meetings, at one point in time, the original court case that caused cities, towns and counties to enact new replacement sign ordinances, uh, in that United States Supreme Court decision, one of the Supreme Court justices wrote an opinion and said, boy, this decision is going to knock the United States into a fury because it's going to invalidate ninety-nine percent of all the, uh, sign ordinances throughout the country. And it had that effect. That justice, Alito, said there were eight things that he believed were certain features of a typical sign ordinance that would be safe, that cities, towns and counties, townships, that, that authority, uh, could rely on, that that wouldn't be upset. So that meant that everybody's ordinance was affected, but there were parts that would not be affected because he was pretty sure, um, that those would be upheld in future litigation. And, um, now I'm, I'm not sure if I'm remembering the number right, but I think three of those things have been struck down by lower courts. So those were found, they weren't safe provisions after all. Um, continuously throughout the country, cases have been winding their way through the court. And, um, I happen to have a discussion today with another town official from a different community about, um, their provision as to when political campaign signs can go up. And that caused me to look up in our ordinance, uh, what we said our, our allowance could be. And our ordinance that we passed, the new ordinance, says that, uh, political science, primary, general or special election sign for an election taking place within the town, could only be posted thirty days before the election. And giving thought to the litigious nature of our society and the discussion that I had with another community leader, I thought, you know, we should probably lock that back and give it another thirty days. And as I considered that, looked at the calendar and thought the way the different calendars will fall from year to year, um, probably a weekend or I just said, we'll get, we'll make it another seven days. So with that background, I put this before you tonight, I, uh, would ask that you suspend the rules and, um, pass this on both readings this evening so that, um, election and candidate signs can go up, uh, sixty-seven, sixty-seven days before the election. And we also have a takedown requirement of five days. And I thought we may as well make that seven as well. So that's the basis of the request. Um, I just did this, so this is right off the printer.
Is there a reason? Please give us a short answer.
I get that.
Why you're, you're limiting it to seven signs?
Oh, uh, well, that's the, the entirety of the scheme of the sign ordinance. One of the things that the courts recognize is that if you've got a plethora of signs, um, campaign signs, construction worker signs, you know, Joe's Roofing Company is working on this house, we do great work and here's a home. Um, and other political signs, you know, I'm, I'm for the president, I'm against the president, um, I'm against the internet, um, I'm in favor of the internet, uh, my child goes to this high school or is on this sports team and I'm a booster or supporter. The courts did recognize uniformly throughout the country that municipalities that regulate signs has a right to declutter. And so as long as we don't regulate which signs can go up, we can regulate the number of signs. So the number that says in our ordinance was, was seven, that was uniformly used in several other communities, uh, so that's what I just went with.
All right, I move that we accept ordinance 201906 in first reading.
Okay. All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Now I make the motion that we suspend the regular order so that we can take this up on the second reading.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Now I move that we, uh, pass this ordinance on the second, uh, vote.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All who's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Um, we do, we actually have this sort of sign number, um, I guess you have to go in date. And because I was rushed, I didn't have an emergency enactment clause.
Okay, now, now can we send Mr. Vogel, check, a letter, an ordinance violation of a sign that's been up forever on a trailer parked on a town property, town right-of-way?
Is that one? Do you know if that was on the list that...
But it teaches the pops right, it's been there for... I mean, that's, I've heard it a long time.
Yeah.
It's there all the time, doesn't belong there.
Has that been turned into the chief?
No, Harden.
Okay, Tom, you can do that a number of ways, but in the end, the, the chief should speak to that. Now, we can either, we can just send a letter and say, please remove it, or we can send the chief out and he can write it back.
A letter would be easy, you know, right?
And then that gives them a, a chance to, to take it down.
Yep.
Um, without... without facing a hundred thirty-one. Can you, maybe, can we, that need to address, the name you need to address?
Jones.
Okay.
Jones.
Water bill, doesn't matter.
I'm...
Oh, not water, that's drug issue.
But while we're working on these ordinances, I have the resolution to correct a code that was, an account that was placed in one of our funds in order to get it put back, I shouldn't say put back, but transferred to the rec fund. It takes a resolution from the council in one week. Doing this transfer, we have it from the cigarette fund, community capital improvement fund, and taking it from the general cigarette tax. There was a change in the way we're recording it from this table way. So I would use your blessing to go ahead and do that since it's from one fund to another, I can't make a correction without the council. If it was within the same fund, then we can probably, since they lost, to move some of the things around into rec fund. And this one would require one, I don't know, the health code. This is a transfer, taking out home loan, putting it in another one, we do it. They're being posted to the wrong, you know, and it's been there for a long time.
Was, was your, did you have a template that set the transfer as a resolution?
Well, I have, you know, we haven't done one, but we do need one.
Right, but this part of the language, if you looked at the bulletin or the manual...
I worked for the other ones that were set up, that we've done in the past. Not for me, personally, on Monday.
I, I don't know if...
Does he think we have to...
If previous one was enacted as a resolution, then I would think that it would be okay. But I guess not, it's something you pass, right?
Capital essential.
Should we hold this up?
Well, pass it as a resolution. And if you look at the manual, and it says it has to be an ordinance, then probably we can we can pass it on second, just for reading as a resolution.
Yeah, I follow, but it doesn't, it doesn't have to be done tonight, so why don't we just check into it, let it pass the...
Well, if we have one reading tonight, then we can adjust and change wherever. And if we don't need to make any adjustments, then we have it passed as a resolution.
It's, the amount that it's worth, $731.67. We don't get very much money on this year, but it's in, it's in here. 2020, by what came through today?
Well, why don't we pass it as an ordinance then, and just consider it on first reading? So if we have to change anything, we can do that at the next meeting. Four, six, and she, that's what it does.
Okay, can we have a motion to... what are we doing?
We're transferring ratting from cigarette... Let's do this right. We're trying, yeah, we're taking it from the general cigarette tax and moving it to the community capital improvement fund.
Okay. Do we have a motion for that?
Okay, I move that we allow, that we vote to transfer...
Transfer how much?
How much is it? Transfer $731.67.
Six, right.
From the cigarette fund to the...
Community capital.
So good. Now, President?
Yes.
We, we do have allowance, we can do this either by ordinance or by resolution.
So we go back to...
So we'll go back to resolution.
Okay, we're back to resolution, set on 19-02. Excellent.
Tell us when you... I'll move that second. Did you get it?
Second.
Yeah.
All those in favor?
Aye. 211 votes.
Those are correct. There's a, typically, you do all fiscal transactions in the form of ordinance. There's a special law under the miscellaneous administrative laws of the Indiana Code for transfer funds for towns with a population of 500 or less. So, and that, the press language of that is it may be done after the passing of an ordinance or a resolution by the town legislature. What I was referring to is the city and town manual has prescribed or sample forms. So you can look at those and see what category you're looking at. And if it's in a resolution form, you can do it by resolution. If it's only in the ordinance form, then you have to do it by ordinance.
Okay, hey, we got, after this, it passed nine. I'm leaving alone.
I'm going to be upset that we're not pulling on the tongue. Right, I said my dog's going to be mad at me.
I guess, my ass. Whitefish bank stabilization, we did the RFT tonight. And our bids on the honor. And on the whitefish repair and quarter restoration, we have just a final public meeting to get scheduled. And here we have to come back and explain to our details. And that's all I have for today.
Ah, no, I'm still working on the e-verify, but I will note that the contract awards might come under e-verify. I resisted putting that into the town code in an effort to minimize the amount of legislating that we do. However, I'm also, as you know or are aware, I tried to move the town council into a position of self-sufficiency so that you can just go to the code book and look things up and be reminded of what we're obligated to do. Occasionally, things like, clearly, the fixed asset record-keeping, except for land activities and the activities that the court treasurer is undertaking, is in a sense fallen out of our active consciousness as an institution. And the e-verify is another one of those, one of those specifics. It's a state law, so everybody, meaning the cities, the towns, the counties, the contractors, have to, have to follow those, those laws. But because we don't have it in our code that we thumb through every once in a while, you know, we forget some of these funny details. And when we forget, there's generally no impetus for the engineer or the attorney or the contractor to provide an e-verify affidavit to the town. So then we may have, our contract law may be kept up to date. And sometimes that, you know, we have an emergency or we have trees that are blocking the road, so we go get them. And, you know, it's not until a year later, the state board of council says, "Hey, you don't have a contract, you have all the other approvals. You have the town council approval, you have the planning list approval, but you don't have a contract." And we have to go get the contract. So I thought if we put that into the code book, we'll all just do a better job.
It's all right, good, I'm on spot.
Otherwise, we have no other county attorney for that show.
Anything else?
The only thing I have on communication was I have a woman call, she wants to know what the signs, our sign requirements are for selling basic real estate. So Angie wants to handle this series. Diane handles. Peace, her husband, she's selling a house.
Can we get the, the new sign ordinance posted on the website? With the new amendment that we just, that we just passed? That would be a paragraph.
It can be done, but I, you know, need all the information.
We have the old one, but...
We post the ordinance.
We post the ordinance.
But we made some changes today.
One paragraph.
Okay, get that paragraph to the... Or if, if Diane's going to do a, you know, a summary of things for this month, or you reported for her that she's going to add some things, you know, she just wants to take those sections out of the...
The ordinance.
And post those.
See your name.
So where do we stand regarding what the weather?
Just, just ask Diane if she, if she'd be willing to post the ordinance.
Well, she's, she's got a problem, but it's just making sure that we have the rate, that she's got the right information. I mean, we have the ordinance, but made a change here.
And it's changed.
Yeah.
So if you could gather those two things. So she has the luxury of either posting it
Okay.
or going through and just making a summary statement. You know, the realtors or virtual signs or political signs.
Joe, this lady's got more letters than the alphabet does in her name.
I know.
But correct is 3744. That's on the Michigan. I mean, my address says 39. So 44 should be on the Michigan. And it's a 630.
300.
Yeah.
Joe.
Oh, okay, I won't buy that anymore.
Do I just give her this? Okay.
That's just one. I've got to get the other one.
Okay, is there any other business there?
All the comments.
So...
If it's easier for her to do a summary, that I'm going to do a summary. Well, I'll tell her to contact you. I mean, she's got that information off, and it's easier, I think, to put, post the whole thing than try to do a summary, because somebody might agree, somebody will say you left this out or that. So I, I would be pushing to post the, the ordinance. And let you know...
Okay.
Counsel.
Okay.
My first comment is that with our election coming up, I believe there are two new residents in town that are running. And I would urge them to come to these meetings if they want to be involved. But I'm sure they're watching the show, or I understand one of them is. I think, I know when I'm watching TV, especially a meeting, not all that attentive, and I may not be in the audience either, but I think it's better. And of course, we urge any residents to show up because we'd like to have a full house. My second comment, I just saw recently on the Buffalo township just passed okay on short and long-term rent ordinance. And we had residents here last month, and a lot of us had people who complained about these Airbnb's. So, and this probably is going to have to go more towards the new council after, or after January. But I think we need, there's got to be some things we can do. I mean, if people are renting at one day at a time, isn't that like a motel? We don't allow hotels to do stuff. I mean, I don't know what definition, but there's got to be things we can do. I know that if we try to regulate this by having them sign up, it gets back to somebody having to do this. It gets back to an enforcement issue, which has been an issue forever this time. But I would like people to think, I mean, a couple of things in New Buffalo that I noticed on the state. The ordinance provides for annual licensing of all residential rental properties and creates an organized inspection program for all rental units. And later in this article, she said the occupancy limits in the buyer code regulate the number of persons that occupy a unit. And their, their article, the parking laws complaint. So they set up a whole commission.
I think that's, I really think that's a good idea because there are more and more people that are starting to...
Thank you, Mrs. W. Pender. Invested, take what other town to do, or we can do it, it's time, it's still very long to be prepared.
Well, I would need to, I went through most of that at the last meeting. And as a matter of fact, the gentleman who was here and asked me last night, I've stayed another half hour, and gave him statutory sites and expounded even further than I had. And basically, what I said last time is the state has taken away city and town and county's ability to wholesale regulate. What Ogden Doos had was their zoning ordinance defined their R1 residential dwelling district. And definition was maybe just two sentences long. Unlike ours, it specified that only, the only use for the structures was single-family residential occupancy. And the extra language that I don't have in front of me tonight, I did last time, allowed the state Supreme Court, because the case went through the trial court, the court of appeals, it went to the state Supreme Court, to say Ogden Doos does not allow short-term rentals under that... under that sentence in its zoning ordinance. That's when the state legislature, responding to the realtors and the management companies, said, we can't have that. And the legislature, noting that places like Ogden Dunes are grandfathered in by the language that they have, they couldn't repeal or wouldn't repeal that provision. So they said, they set a date. And they said, any, any existing ordinance before this date, which was tied to the date of passage of the law, stands. Municipality can only pass regulations if it follows the new limitations that are set forth in that law. I think the citation is in the ordinance.
I understand we blew it a couple, a year and a half ago and we're all guilty.
But it's, it's bad limited. So if we can find specific purposes within the allowed categories of regulation, then we can do it. But also understand, in a separate set of laws predating the short-term rental pay, they, the legislature passed a law, you can probably blame the city or county for this, that says they charge no more than one five-dollar one-time inspection fee or registration fee. So if it's simply a matter of we wanna know what properties in town are doing this, I mean, we could make work of going on the internet and looking, you know, who's listed and who's advertising. Then we could, you know, we could require them to register if we have a purpose statement in the ordinance and to show what we're trying to accomplish and why we're trying to accomplish. So it now requires additional work to maybe have a police department justification, a fire department justification, an ambulance justification, and, you know, emergency contact information, for example. You know, if a management company is managing a property and they rent it out to a group, a college fraternity, and the college fraternity is creating a nuisance, we could enforce our general nuisance law and, and go in and break it up and write tickets to every individual and the homeowner and the management company. But that's not real effective. And Long Beach had a form of ordinance, but it was not a full ban. So Ogden Dunes is sitting there with a total ban, totally legal. Long Beach has a bunch of requirements that pre-existed the state limitation above, but they're not really able to enforce all of those.
What about getting excellent facilities and making money in houses? You know, it's like running a business.
We, we can't say it's a business. And a business of that type does not allow in a residential property. That's what Ogden Dunes has. And that, that's the magic language. It's not word of health. We, I don't have our ordinance in front of me, but I remember reading that Michiana Trousers does not allow that. I don't know, is, is that in the legal home occupation section? Or is that... I don't know. There's a west section of, you know, we can say I don't have it. Because it seems to me the zoning section was something to the effect of our, our one district is what's portrayed on the map, which is the entirety of the town. And still, we passed the government zone, we created the government zone, which was responsive to the self-out lawsuit. And that being the later enactment, that carved out government district. So what's in the government district, which is this building and the barn, is exempt from the R1 district rules. So it'd be interesting to get that. Because it, it, I think, three months ago, I recommended that the planning commission still enact the Ogden Dunes language into the ordinance. And we won't be able to enforce it on the short-term rental property basis, on that basis. And we have to recognize grandfathering for existing structures. But it would be applicable to different issues that we can even contemplate right now. Just like we could contemplate that the state is gonna impose the short-term rental ban and the elimination of building inspections to apartment complexes and short-term rentals.
Okay, well, she goes with it.
Okay, I'll say her.
Aye.